He was like sixteen.
All rise.
The allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into the republic where we were sustained, one nation under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight to strengthen Shelby County's strong votes. Lord, amen.
We'll start with the, uh, the public safety tax. Aaron?
Okay, so, um, as I was talking to Jody about this, we have already adopted this. Um, but we adopted it too soon. So we should have waited until September to adopt it because we got it adopted early. So they were gonna start, um, we would have started receiving money in October. And we didn't want to do that, so we withdrew it. So we're gonna have to have, another hearing in September to adopt an ordinance, but as was discussed in the financial meetings, Greg has presented, made possibly a, another tax to help bring some money in. And some of you guys were under the, okay for him to speak about it to you guys today to see if we want to go ahead with this because that will have to be part of the September hearing also. So Greg is on here. Can you hear us, Greg?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Oh, and I did also send that all out to you guys the other day, his new, proposals.
Yes, Greg, we can hear you.
Uh, Amy, did you give them the letter that we sent you this afternoon?
Oh, this afternoon?
Um, actually, I think it was dated August fourteenth, so it might have been last week.
Yeah, I already sent that out to him with the proposal of your rates.
Perfect, okay. Let me explain, counsel. Um, good, good evening. Um, as I brought up in the financial meeting and as all of the county councils around the state are, they're looking at that as we move towards enactment of your new lit rate of up to one point two oh in twenty twenty seven. Uh, and in light of a pause period on your current, we wanted to at least have you entertain or suggest to you, based upon this letter, a point zero five jail income tax, or basically jail lit. The letter indicates to you that the, based upon estimated county income of one point four billion, the new lit at that, uh, five basis points would generate about seven hundred and five thousand dollars. Keep in mind, we have suggested the jail lit because the county collects that in, in whole and does not distribute it to other taxing districts. It can be, it can help for the next year or two to supplement, uh, jail operating costs, jail, uh, basically salaries, anything we do, uh, in regards to the correctional facility. We also put in the letter that at point one basis points, it would increase or you would receive approximately a hundred and forty one thousand. Keep in mind, again, where our break even lit right now would be that we calculated in the sustainability would be point seven oh. That is without assuming your increase of point five, which you've already voted on and approved for distribution to the various, um, fire areas. This additional five basis points, if you would choose to do it, again, would supplement your budget. Keep in mind, we made, uh, made it very obvious to you in the, um, financial meeting that your loss due to the three hundred dollar credit that the state will enact and give for twenty twenty six will cost you about eight hundred thousand dollars. So we did see it as an opportunity to offset that, uh, because eight hundred thousand, as you have seen in your updated sustainability, is going to make things challenging. We're basically working with all of our clients to get to July of twenty twenty seven, actually two short years from now, because that's when you will be enacting the major, uh, change in LIT. And actually, we're suggesting you'll probably have to start on that in February or March of twenty twenty seven. So I know that was maybe a little long-winded, but keep in mind that we, we look at the totality of Shelby County's financing or financial, financials. And keep in mind also, you have been very conservative with your LIT. The sustainability will show that you are number sixty six, the sixty six lowest out of ninety two counties. So that's significant. You're in the lower quartile. Um, also keep in mind that in the sustainability, we have calculated the impact overall per year, if you went the ten basis points, on the median household income, it would be approximately sixty dollars per year. Please do not confuse that with per month, per year. And so, uh, that's, and keep in mind, the sixty is at the full ten basis points. Thirty is already been voted on you, uh, voted by your board, uh, for, uh, helping the fire. So at this point in time, I will pause and take any questions that you may have.
My biggest thing looking at this is, have we done anything or done our due diligence to try to cut our budget yet? I just feel like we owe it to citizens to work on reducing our budget before we ever raise taxes. That's my two cents.
So if you could, Greg, if you could kind of break that down into a little more layman terms. Uh, so if we went ahead with the lit increase that we approved previously, that would ultimately cost the county a lot more money than if we, we kind of changed course?
Uh, wait a minute, may, maybe I should back up. So you approved point zero five or five basis points for public safety for fire departments. You do not, uh, have a fire department. You're not going to get any of that money. The county's not gonna get any money to offset its budget. Okay, from that, this is an opportunity, if you see fit, to raise it five basis points to supplement your losses. And I guess the kind of the way I was thinking is that we have had round one budget cuts to a certain degree. We haven't formalized those, but we have done that during our full day work. But keep in mind, what you already approved will not get you, the county council, any more money at all. Right, Amy?
Correct.
But that all goes to the fire departments.
Yes.
Volunteer fire departments.
And that would come out, so that would be less, so basically it would be raising the tax to the county, but we would lose the ability to decide what, where that money gets spent in the future.
Correct. That money is only for fire, volunteer fire. That's what you're.
Keep in mind, that is only good until twenty twenty seven at this point.
Into twenty twenty seven.
Yeah.
Then the, the five basis points for the jail, Greg, that would be, when, when you, that would be in excess of the fire stuff, correct?
That it would be the recommendation, yes.
Right, and that would give the county money, that, that would give us money to pay for jail-related expenses, you said, correct?
Correct, and it comes to you a hundred percent.
Okay.
Freedom of what generals have spent on. And it would offset the, the, almost all of what the state cut from us.
Plus, we're also, another thing that we talked about, Greg, correct? Stop me if I'm wrong, but our ambulance has gone up um, two hundred thousand dollars and we're paying that out of, um, already some public safety money and it's just gonna keep going up, so it's gonna go up another three percent every year, so if we can possibly move some of those police officers or jail, not police, jail employees out of that budget, that could help us fund the ambulance more. I mean, so we're not pulling it from Racino or somewhere else.
And Amy, I agree a hundred percent, yeah, what you said.
And so Greg, just to confirm your numbers, by raising it, the, the recommended percent would generate roughly seven hundred thousand, correct?
For twenty six and twenty seven.
Okay.
After that, it's gone.
Right, right.
So I'm trying, we would be at one percent or we would still be at point oh five?
In, in the sustainability, you're currently one point six oh, so that is one point six oh percent. It would go to one point seven oh, uh, so accountants call that a hundred and seventy basis points.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Right, right.
Well, I, really all I need to know is how you guys want me to advertise, get the ordinance ready so that you guys can have another hearing next month and adopt it.
So is it, my understanding is that if we would have adopted the one for the fire department alone, we would not have been able to adopt an additional?
No, we could.
We have to do them both together?
No, you don't have to do them both together. This, because we, uh, we, because we adopted earlier than September first, or, because then what that was gonna do was they were gonna start withholding money and the county would have started receiving money in October first for the fire department instead of waiting until January when we all, not we all, you all decided to start it in January. I didn't realize there was different adoption dates. So since we have to re-adopt it after September first, so it won't start till January first, this was brought up during budgets and financial meetings that because of the three hundred dollar credit everybody's getting, um, on top of the homesteads and everything, it's gonna take money away from them. So this was just kind of helps.
And Amy, I may correct one thing you said. You can, you cannot do two, at, under current law, it is our understanding, you cannot do two at two different times. You can only make one change in your lit and it has to be all encompassing or not.
My bad, sorry about that.
One per year?
This isn't only because of the three hundred, it is because of the rising cost that are, are, you know, such as in insurance and all those things.
Greg, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, this, if we adopt both of these and do ten basis points, the median income per household in Shelby County, this will end up costing roughly ten dollars per month or a hundred and twenty dollars per year?
Sixty three.
No, I think I said, so it's in your sustainability and I, I believe I said, uh, sixty dollars and, and being an accountant, I'll, I'll calculate the exact number, but in this sustainability, it shows that, um, basically we would have, uh, uh, a median household income of sixty six thousand would be one thousand oh two oh point seven seven, and that would be current. Um, that would be in, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty six. Okay, and my calculator's not working as good as I want it to, and currently they are paying nine six oh point seven two. So that's sixty dollars and five cents. If I divide that by twelve, then that would be five dollars a month.
Okay, and that's with ten basis points. I, I thought you were explaining earlier that that was on five.
No, sir. That's in the sustainability pa, the page, um, uh, one thirty three, and it is, we went ahead in our updated version, showed you the ten.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Probably the, the first order, whatever we want to do going forward, we should, we should probably vote on rescinding the previous, uh,
Yeah, we can do that.
goal to go forward with that lit tax. I would entertain a motion to rescind that previous.
Trying to find out which one was. Rescind ordinance twenty twenty five dash fifteen.
Rescind twenty twenty five dash fifteen. I have a motion to.
Make a vote, I'll make a motion.
So I got it. Motion to res, uh, a second to rescind the previous ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. All right, so then is that ordinance number, sorry?
Twenty twenty five dash fifteen.
And then we have to decide today what we want to advertise for tomorrow, so we need to decide if we want to go with the.
I would suggest a vote. Is that what you would recommend, Jody?
Any questions or discussion about?
Being a motion?
So move.
Okay.
Where we pair what?
What's your motion?
Oh.
Point oh five or the point one?
The point one, yes, I'm.
With point oh five being for the fire?
Correct.
Point oh five being for the jail?
We're voting on what we're advertising.
Simply advertising, yes.
Not the actual one. Who did? Somebody seconded that?
Yeah, so we got a motion in a second. All in favor then of advertising, uh, to go with the, the point? Or I guess the ten points or whatever, the point five and the point five. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's six oh. Is there anything we, else we need to do at this point?
To my knowledge. Correct, Greg. We just gotta get the ordinance ready now for advertising.
That is correct. We'll get it, uh, get it and go ahead and turn it back into DLGF because I don't think you have, have you?
Not, not with the new one, no.
Okay, and so we can, we, we will do that and then, um, if there's any further questions at the next financial meeting, which may be coming to a theater near you very, very quick, um, then, you know, if you have any other questions, I can address it.
Thank you, Greg.
Sure. Is there anything else counsel needed me for tonight? If not, I'm gonna go get my dinner.
Nope, I don't think so, Greg.
I think it's all good.
Yes, dinner, Greg.
Well, thank you very much and I'll probably see you on Thursday.
Thank you.
Bye.
July minutes, distributed. Anyone have any post-corrections or additions? Being a motion approved?
So move.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. To, uh, are they all transfers?
No, they're not all transfers. We only have two, two transfers, there are sure additions. This is the, one of the additionals and I gave you guys a copy of the new one that they just brought, but and it's just to pay a bill, so. John, John's not here tonight, but John is back in in the country.
John's.
All right, so we got the, uh, additional appropriations for the extension office. Who's asking for additional thousand?
No, 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 this is a transfer.
Oh, this is a transfer, okay.
Yeah. This is just a transfer.
I want, I want to take a motion to approve transfer just presented.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh.
Our first addition.
G A L.
Yeah, this is the money that they never know how much they're gonna get from the state till they get it, so.
And they give it to us and then we distribute. Most, most approved as appropriation?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. Then we've got one on the papers at the appropriation for IT. Oh, we got a health one too?
No, that IT was a transfer.
Okay.
So I.
Just the health?
Yeah, so now we're the health.
This is for a new copier?
This is to, um, claims on the copier maintenance. They which, they actually didn't even turn a budget in. That's what all these transfers are, or all these additions are. There's like fifteen of them because they didn't do a budget. I told them that they were supposed to have a budget, so they turned in all these additional appropriations to make their budget. So that's what all these fifteen are. Um, that.
This year they didn't do it, but they didn't do it last year either, right?
They didn't in twen, this is for twenty five.
Did this year?
So, uh, they have turned one in for twenty.
Sure.
Yes. So I would say if you guys want to approve all
All at once?
Fifteen of these at once. I mean, so we don't have to go through each one, but it's because they didn't turn a budget in last year or this year.
Could you just scroll through them so?
Sure, can. There's eighty five hundred in copier maintenance, fifty two dollars in mental health, eight thousand in gas and truck repairs, clinical, clinic monitoring and schedule, twenty five hundred, legal services, fifteen thousand, program partner support, um, seventy four thousand, eight ten ninety six, uniforms, five thousand, personal health, three thousand, um, school supplies is four thousand, TB testing is fifty two fifty, um, maternal supplies, five thousand, training supplies, four thousand, HIV and Hep clinic supplies, eight thousand one twenty six, immunization supplies, five thousand, um, environmental health supplies, one thousand five seventy six fifty five. That's it for that fund.
Was there a reason that there was no budget?
They just didn't turn one in and Amy, they do have a new person over there, Amy, and so she didn't realize she needed to do budgets for everything. And there was some miscommunication over there, I guess.
If we totaled this all up, I mean, what's our best guess is judge it versus the year prior and then maybe this year? I mean, are they over budget and, I mean, I know they didn't.
No, they're not over budget. They get this money from the state that's not a tax rate or anything. This is money that comes from the state tobacco settlement, um, fund, so.
It was semi-allocated, right? I mean, the money, okay.
All right, would I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Prove, approve, all fifteen. Second?
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh.
The next, uh, the next one's for the tobacco settlement. This other one was a health maintenance. I'm sorry, this one's tobacco. They are just short in postage, so they need another three hundred and thirty seven dollars and eighty cents.
Make a motion to approve? Second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh.
Um, I don't, are you on here, Nathan, under one of the iPhones? He asked for the Zoom. Okay, I guess he's not. He asked for the Zoom and, uh, this is an additional hundred thousand dollars. I don't know if you guys, if any of the commissioners have talked to you guys about this. So what they're wanting to do is do a pass-through grant, it's called something else pass-through grant, but I honestly can't remember what it is. Um, to invest a hundred thousand dollars into Blue River Foundation. And Blue River Foundation will, just like they do your Racino money, take the interest, but they give grants where this money will be available for any organization, food pantries or anything to ask for additional money to help with poor relief. Instead of having to come to the commissioners, you know, I'll go through.
This is something the commissioners currently handle themselves. They're turning it over to the.
I believe they pay, um, money to the food pantries, um, Salvation Army, well, one of the school, southwestern school pantry, and so forth. So what they're hoping is they're gonna get this built up. Right now, it's just a one-time donation, but it may become more, um, so that those programs can go through the Blue River Foundation instead of us doing it. So, um, I was hoping one of them would have been on here and Nathan asked me for the Zoom link, but he must kind of made it on. So, um, that's what this hundred thousand dollars is for. And that'll be used for, um, not only just food, but clothing, um, anybody losing their house to a fire or devastation, something to that effect, Blue River will handle it instead of having to come to commissioners.
What does the Tyndale Farm, what has it have to do with the Tyndale Farm that doesn't count?
So, yeah, that's the account. Tyndale Farm was, um, given, when the, the people passed away, the Tyndale Farm was giving to the county. Stipulations were this money can only be used for poor relief.
Hmm.
And poor relief only. So that's all it's ever been used for. Um, they do, I mean, they've used some money because it's a farm, so we get the money off the farm.
The cash.
The cash rent.
Basically.
So they have used some of the money to help with drainage and stuff like that, but other than that, it's nothing, nothing's been used except for poor relief.
Does the bunny that receives a year cover this cost?
Pardon?
The money that the farm receives each year cover?
Bring in about, um, I think Diane said eighty thousand a year. So there's a pretty good buildup right now and so they're starting with the hundred. And they do have a contract, um, through Tyndale, but I don't, to my knowledge, I don't think they've had to pay any of the township trustees. If they run out of money in their township relief money, poor relief, um, then they can come and ask for additional funding from the Tyndale Farm. And the, and, but to my knowledge, since they've had it set up, I think it's been maybe, I'm flies, about seven years maybe. Uh, might be longer. Uh, I don't think any of them's had to come and ask for money out of this. We've, we've, um, they have used it one time to, um, to bury someone that they couldn't find anything, so, but they're, they're buried out at the Tyndale Cemetery.
Hmm.
But they use the money to pay the burial.
Yes. You, you said it was built up to about how much?
Oh, I don't know. I think there might be four hundred thousand in it. Sorry, I don't know. I think when I looked, it was close to that.
To me, what they're doing makes sense. I mean, Blue River's got the manpower and the resource.
They have to earn quite a bit of interest off of it, a lot faster than what we were on it. Because they have that so mu, so much money built up in their founding.
Yeah, and just the administration effort is just easy for them to handle, even with, having a couple commissioners, people will know about it. Probably a good idea. All right, anyone want to care and make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
So I got it. Motion in the second to approve this appropriation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh.
Five Below, um, abatement, and there are some people here to represent, um, Five Below.
Some people, come on up.
I know Chris, that's the only one I don't remember his last name. Sorry.
Yes. Uh, good evening. Uh, appreciate you guys, uh, having us here. Uh, my name is Chris Giannini. I'm a senior director of development management, uh, for Five Below. Uh, these are my colleagues, uh, Antonio and Carrie. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Sure, my name's Antonio Johnson. I'm the regional general manager, so I oversee Indy, uh, Georgia, and a small e-commerce facility in Arizona.
Chris, here's Sarah, um, I'm the director of operations for the Indy facility.
Um, so we just wanted to come here in front of you guys to just give you an update on kind of where we stand with the building. Uh, we were here in twenty twenty one, uh, when we decided to, we were at different locations within Indiana and decided to bring the building to Shelby County, so really appreciate the support we've gotten from the county in the past. Uh, we opened the building in twenty twenty two. Uh, and it really been continuing to grow, um, along with the company and with the county, um, and it's been a very, very, um, successful operation up to this point. Um, last year or this, early this year, we submitted our CF ones. We quickly realized we'd made a mistake in those CF ones. Those significantly undercounted the amount of, uh, full-time employees that we have in the building. Uh, we have since resubmitted that and we shared a letter with you guys a couple weeks ago. Uh we have since resubmitted that and we shared a letter with you guys a couple of weeks ago outlining exactly how that happened and kind of where we stand. Um so we just wanted to give you guys an update on that and um answer any questions you guys may have about that. And about the operation of the building in general.
I have a question regarding the employment numbers. So i- is there a significant amount of your employment there that's seasonal? And are you considering them full-time? Um that cuz it's from reading your letter, that's kind of what it sounded like. I'm just trying to wrap my head around all that.
Yeah, the the business is very seasonal, uh and the holiday season is obviously the biggest part of the business. Uh and the building really is constructed and the entire network is kind of optimized. To support that growth and that the business in the holiday season. So while we do have a number of seasonal employees, uh at certain times, they're considered a full-time equivalent. Um but you know, throughout the year, the numbers kind of ebb and flow, but uh yeah, the largest numbers are in the holiday season. That's multiple months, and that's a few different months, and we started to ramp up and. The local team could talk to you a little bit more about that, but we start to ramp those numbers up, that kind of continues through the entire fall and into winter.
And to your point, most of the folks are full-time. It's a very small number of their percentages. Uh some proceeds pretty much everything's full-time.
Reason, explain myself. The reason I ask is, you know, with us not receiving uh property tax from this, the only tax. That we see that benefits us as county. Are income tax. Um obviously. If they don't live in the county, that number is significantly lower. Um so that's that's one of the reasons, I think. We were questioning the the employment numbers and and why you currently were not sitting at what you said you would be. Um and and my my big question, then my next question following up to that is. You estimate. I think it was four seventy on the initial. Just out of curiosity, is that something that you start seeing yourself build up to or? At what point will we start seeing? Closer to that number?
As far as, so I think the four seventy number was based on by the end of twenty six. Uh we know by the end of twenty four, we're about three fifty or three sixty. We're to be in a similar place probably this year. Not sure those future years, some of that hasn't been finalized. It's a public company. We haven't announced our updated store count numbers going forward. But. As we kind of explained in the letter, that the number of employees in the in the ship center is really based on how many stores we're supporting. And we have fallen behind some of our goals that we initially set out. We've fallen a little bit behind on kind of where we're gonna be on store count. Uh the second piece of that is we need to expand the building to hit those future store count numbers that we planned on. We thought we'd be doing that expansion in twenty five into twenty six. We're now thinking that's probably twenty six into twenty seven, but that hasn't been quite finalized yet as well. Uh the good news is we're continuing to be one of the fastest growing retailers in the country. Where we opened almost uh two hundred and sixteen stores last year. Probably sort of finish a little less than one sixty this year. Uh we're kind of trying to kind of ramp that up. But we've had a few headwinds out there with inflation, interest rates, tariffs, um some other things. So we're trying to ramp that back up. So we've taken a little bit of a hit, but we've really started to ramp that back up.
Do you struggle filling those roles, finding full-time?
We have a now hiring sign um in front of the building. You could see it now and are constantly looking to to replenish account.
Yeah, I think that's the fact that you've kind of hovered around that number facing kind of the the macroeconomic issues that. Not just you, but the the majority of retailers are facing right now. You know, says certainly says something, and then your your store store count continues to to increase as well. But yeah, I'm just curious. I would assume you're much like others and struggling to find. Sources to staff up.
And what's unique about Indy is Indy also has e-commerce, so we support stores and e-commerce out of the facility, and so that's a different skill set for. Versus individual uh customer orders, and so some of that is the nuance also based there as well.
So where where do you say your numbers are at right now, employment wise, roughly?
We're roughly about two seventy five, three hundred, and then we'll get to that three fifty number with the rest of us. So you see, so our carrier capacity usually somewhere in the two fifty to two seventy-ish range between this e-commerce.
Jeremy, the filing of the C F one, and maybe I need to adjust the attorney, the filing of the C F one. The number of employees isn't really the factor. Are we allowed or do we ask or how can we, uh when a company comes in? To have more of their employee base live in the county? Because that's where you reap the reward. Is it, you can't allow it?
Or is it? I have control over that. I that the reporter, they have to report on estimated employees and then what they're currently at, but as far as where they reside, that's that's not a factor.
Their estimation and where they're at doesn't really affect us financially as a count, so it's not really an issue, so to say, unless they're living in this area.
Are we still collect? Lit on out of county?
We did.
Please minimal. Did that go away?
We'd never have. It's based on the county you live in.
Hundred percent.
That's where your taxes go.
I guess I would say maybe it doesn't matter, but the hope is the more jobs they get, some of them are.
Well, you think the, yeah, the odds, right? Well, and that kind of goes back to my point. I mean, I I know you're trying to fill roles, right? So for you, they're love to have Shelby County's. Absolutely. Resources fill those roles just as you would. Any anybody else too. I mean, you're just looking for quality.
The thing that we did, we actually partnered with Ivy Tech to have uh classes of visiting facilities. We've done that for the last three years. Not just the the sort of the Indy branch, but all of the branches that sort of Ivy Tech has. Uh and one of the things that we've seen from that is not a lot of ventures has come out of that, even though we offer that. Uh we also made money to Ivy Tech for that purpose. But a lot of folks are not going to do uh sort of what we do, and we actually explain that very, very uh. Un- unfortunately or sadly, because it's obviously lower to field, uh and it's growing rapidly compared to other uh places, uh. Not just Five Below, but also other places, but obviously Five Below. And the jobs also aren't just your, you know, regular garage worker jobs. You have. Maintenance mechanics. We have like, we have a whole gamut of positions in a facility uh that folks could work their way to, but. Right now, it's extremely difficult to get folks that want to do manual type of uh jobs.
Uh what specifically with Ivy Tech, would you be looking for people to do? Because we also have a program here. Uh you know, with the Ivy Tech where you students can essentially go for free, high school students in the county to Ivy Tech. I know they're always looking for certifications, things like that. What would be some things you'd like to see?
Yeah, I think we would love a, I know there's a there's a mechanical component to what Ivy Tech does uh to partner with them on that. We would also love a more continued partnership on um just career development around business. Uh because my background, I've worked in finance before, and and it's not just about the uh warehouse aspect that we. Most of us have done other things for a larger company, so we could be a resource for folks, not just related to a five of a goal.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not asking the questions I'm asking, trying to make a case to to get rid of your abatement. I just want to understand your numbers. Be able to. See the progress that you plan to make.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for talking, Donald.
Yes, so in regard to the abatement, I will entertain a motion. Another motion to extend.
Second.
Motion in the second to extend the abatement, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Six oh.
All right, I'll just tell you, sign these after we're.
I already missed.
You signed the wrong one.
You got me all confused. Let me get uh human resources, Donna.
Yes. At the. Our last financial. Any meeting. We had talked with Greg, had recommended doing a hiring chill, which we're currently under a hiring chill. But it. Exempts public safety and it also exempts certain mission critical positions. Which mission critical positions are. Positions such as probation officers. Field officers. Dispatchers, nine one one dispatchers.
They're it.
Merit deputies.
Actual listing of that, or is that just what you kind of deem mission critical?
A little of both. There's listing.
Figure.
Yeah, it's a little of both. But moving forward, Greg has recommended that we do away with all. Um of the current procedures in place and that all position requests come and be presented to council. Um and that's just due to the. Impending budget restraints that we're going to be under. Um and that doesn't mean that they will not be replaced. It just means that it gives you council members an opportunity. To have discussions with the department heads, to get their feedback. It allows. Folks an opportunity to have discussions with department heads. And just entertain a good discussion back and forth to verify needs. That's really about the only thing that will change. There will be a delay in the posting process because inevitably it never fails. There's always a resignation or retirement the day after a council meeting, so. There, y- you know, currently we can. We can post a position. With. Pending council approval, but we won't be able to do that anymore with this. With this process in place because all positions will have to come before council. So that's going to be the delay, but that's also the point behind this and Greg's recommendation because it's going to save a little bit of money, having that. Delay built in, so.
Well, this is for new positions and existing.
Correct, it's all positions, new positions.
Right.
Currently still have to come before council.
Right, right.
This will be new and replacement positions. All positions, full-time, part-time, all positions will have to come. Or they are posted and like.
We currently only have one or two positions.
Well, that.
For next year.
We've.
New.
Hmm two. We have two new positions that are pending. Correct. That are being discussed for next year's budget. Two new positions. And then tonight we have, tonight we're going to discuss two replacement positions. But then we've got, yeah, I've got to talk to you about the jail, the highway and nine one one and see, we'll get into those in a minute, but. So. I just need to. What I need is a vote from you guys so that I can take it to the commissioners on Monday so that. We have their support so that um Jason can send a letter out to all department heads. And let them know of the new policy that's in place so that we can make sure everybody has a good understanding and everybody is on the same page. But um. We just need to know what you guys want to have in place moving forward, what your preferences are. You want all positions, if you want to exempt some positions, I don't, I don't know what your guys' pleasure is.
What's what's your recommendation?
I'm good either way. Um it's really just a matter of. Of what you guys want. Um do you want to review all positions? Do you only want to review? New positions? Do you want to review replacement positions?
Question. This stuff does not necessarily have to come before council and public. Doesn't have to. It doesn't currently do that.
Oh, it does do that, yes.
Even replacements? I didn't know it's all up there.
Yes, no, they all do that now.
Cool. So the only difference. Will be that you can't post it pending council.
The only, the the difference now will be that. All positions will, meaning Louis' merit deputies will come before you, jail officer positions will come before you. Probation officer positions will come before you, highway positions will.
All those that were deemed mission critical.
Right, all the, all the positions that were deemed mission critical will now come before you, whereas before you weren't. You weren't. You weren't. You weren't um scrutinizing jail officers, you weren't scrutinizing merit deputies, weren't scrutinizing probation officers. Field officers. Nine one one.
Can I ask a question to you, Louis? I feel like public safety is probably one of the ones that. I would be most concerned about us putting a delay on. From your past history over the, over the years you've been doing this. How many times do you see if this were in place through your entire career? Would you have been put in a position that would have been? A little tough.
Yeah, I I mean, I I can start with, uh since I've been the sheriff, I've hired over seventy jail officers. I've hired over twenty road officers. Um numerous dispatchers. There would be times if I had to wait thirty days, it would, it could cripple. The running of the jail. Two or three people quit on one shift. I can shift some people around with time. But I typically have only five working. If two or three cut off shift, I can't, the jail can't operate. It, we would be calling in overtime and that's just gonna cost us more money. So. That would be my only. Downfall. Um I haven't, I will gladly do it, but you guys will see me here every month for the jail, I promise. Until I retire, you'll see me every month. Monthly. Maybe if we could do bimonthly, and they would be bimonthly. Currently, it's short right now in the jail, two positions. I'm s- short a court security officer. We did make an offer to one. We're gonna see if she's accepts prior to, but she if she does, she will not be starting until a little bit in September. But it's not uncommon. A- as major holder can tell you, it's not uncommon that we're four to five people short in the jail monthly. They they just come and go, and it's um. It's kind of an uphill battle. Court security is a little more secure. Um dispatch is becoming more secure just behind that they all there, you know. Trying to get out of the hole, but the jail was a, is a very rotational job.
All in order.
Is. Retrain and they'll go to another jail or they just didn't like it or, you know, it's and we get the, we get those same jailers that come here that fill our voids. So we just basically, we're just a farm club for other jails ju- as they are for us. So that that could hurt us a- at a time.
And cuff them. I don't want to handcuff you guys from that to wait thirty days.
No, and that's, that's where I'd be calling you as my guy and you telling you to make some phone calls because sometimes. If we do get that short, it would be, it would be a big entrance.
See, and that's what I was trying to get at earlier, my first questions. For these. What we deem mission critical that don't come before us currently. Can that just simply be council oversight with with an email to us and? And and we communicate that way and and if there's any opposition, will you speak up?
Or I could, I'm, I mean, I. Yeah, I mean, I could simply say, please requesting to replace. Two jail officers.
Give us seventy two hours to respond.
Sure.
We need to designate which, which departments.
Yes, absolutely.
Because you're gonna have everybody, you know.
I think Sheriff's Department.
I agree, so yeah.
Totally.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody else.
Do you, and that's my question, do you want to deem the Sheriff's Department mission critical then?
I do. Oh, wow, I think so.
And I I think if.
That's what we deem.
Yeah, and if we can get you to send out an email and give us seventy two hours from time to email and.
Might put dispatch in there too, just to. Just.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, I just logistically though, I think the problem, but. What if we instead, if you email us also, at least we got a sense of it. And then as a council, if we thought there were too many or we didn't like it, we could then address it and maybe then change it, but. Rather than have us having emails and trying to take action through email or for doing, maybe it's just. You let us know and we can kind of keep monitor on it. If we think it's too much. Maybe we keep it as it is, and if we think there are things on there, say, you know, this should really be coming for us, then we can change that. That's kind of what I was getting at. Send an email if if she doesn't get pushback within seventy two hours.
Okay.
Then then we'll move forward with it, but if we get pushed back, then we'll just say, no, that one needs to wait until.
Or revisit the whole idea.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll have Louis continue to request it through me, and I'll shoot an email, say, hey, Louis requested to replace blank. If I don't hear anything, he'll proceed and life will go on.
That's pretty much how we do it.
We've been.
As we years, I always call, I always call Donna and let her, you know, let you guys.
Chill, we have to kind of designate.
So all other positions will come before you. So all other positions will come before you, full time and part time. The department head, I'll put it in my HR notes. The department head will attend the meeting. They will come before you. Because as Greg has said in the financial meetings, you guys are going to have some serious decisions. And some places as well as the departments.
Some, these are positions that have been deemed, you know, critical.
These are.
Levelized. Maybe we, yeah, so maybe I would. It sounds like we have some sort of consensus. Keep it the way it is, just keep us updated and we can revisit this if we think. It's worth trying to save money. That's what we did for the school board is Dr. Vance, we gave him, because of the teachers.
Right.
Shortage all the time.
Right.
Him trying to get people to be like, hey, you just take, you take control of it, let us know what you're doing. I think that'd be for the sheriff.
Then all other positions will come before council.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I can get a vote on that, then I will have Jason get that drafted and. Through by the commissioners.
Make the motion to. As stated to make sheriff's department and nine one one. Mission critical with email notifications to the council. All other positions will need to be come before the council. Month for me.
Second, that's your motion.
Can I ask, so did you, did you want to make all previously mission critical positions stay that for now or did you want?
I don't, I. To me, I'm, I'm only thinking sheriff's department and, and dispatch right now.
Former mission critical such as like probation and now be transitioned over to where they will be.
Is correct. Probation will be transitioned and those are all very far and few between. There's not much turnover in, in any of those other positions. So I don't think you're gonna, I mean, you're not going to get flooded.
The only time I could see the street department being a huge issue is come wintertime when the pile of streets. That they've got to have somebody right now.
Well, we've got four openings in highway and they need people right now because of retirements. But those are things of getting built, so.
Putting them in a bad spot where they, where it's going to cause a.
I mean, if there was, if there was a public, there's always going to be an exception to the rule. That's the number one thing in H. There's always an exception to the rule. I will send out an SOS email. And I mean, we're not going to let public safety be of, be of in jeopardy. That will never happen. I will send out an SOS email. So. If we have to post something pending council approval, we can certainly do that. So. Okay.
We do have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so with that being said, then we do have two plus. The assessor's office is requesting a replacement position for a deputy. This is to replace. The Denise's position who is now the elected. Assessor. This position is thirty five hours a week. It's not two. The hourly rate is twenty one, twenty two. Denise will have a fairly new department in there. She's going to be new herself in the elected role. Ms. Denise, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but she's here. You want to make introduction and answer any questions on this one?
Seem to ask for approval to hire my replacement due to Anne's passing. We are currently down, I have two people underneath of me and one of them is talking retirement sometime within the next year. And so we're going to be really low on staff if we don't get somebody in there and trained.
You have a temporary at one point.
We haven't had a temporary in a while.
Not really filling your spot, filling another one because you were deputy and you were a one.
Right, I was a chief deputy.
Right, which was a command one. So you're kind of just replacing Teresa, which was a command two.
Well, she's.
Because you said replacing her, she was come out one.
She's got a new hire starting September second, but then she'll have another deputy. This position will, won't start till October, November, right?
Right.
Yeah, it'll be another deputy position starting in October, November is when this.
Have you replaced you as a deputy?
No, I don't think we're going to do that.
That's what this position will be.
In, in October.
So this position's not going to start.
I just want, because she is a command one, I wanted to clear that up.
She's not going to hire a chief. Cause her staff is so new, she's not hiring. She's not appointing a chief deputy for.
Good. Wow. We need to make sure they're actually going to be in the office and stay and pass all their levels and make sure they want to be here to do the job.
I get it. I just wanted to clarify, you were, you were a command one.
Yeah, I was a one as the, as the chief. Yeah, so.
You're really just kind of placing, replacing Teresa.
Then her position as a deputy, yeah. Yeah. And then this position will start sometime in October, November, so. It is a replacement, so.
You said it was a replacement.
It is not an add on.
I'll make a motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass the six oh. Thank you.
And the second one is for youth assistance. This is a part time position. We had a resignation for the early intervention advocate. This position works up to twenty five hours a week. The hourly rate is nineteen thirty one to twenty one, twenty two. It fluctuates depending on they prefer somebody with a degree, but in today's world. Hard to fill part time positions and we don't always get somebody with the degree that can work. Part time in this rate. So that's why the fluctuation in the hourly rate. The prior individual circumstances changed, so they needed full time employment. And Ms. Melissa, she's here if you have any questions for Melissa.
Absolutely. So unfortunately, my person just resigned. And so now I'm in a position to need to ask for a replacement. Couple of things, of course, prevention is amazing and that actually helps save the county money. And also I just want to remind that this is a cost sharing program. So the city does pay for half of the salary. And so that works out to about thirteen thousand dollars for the year, kind of on the top end. So if we could be able to replace this part time position. That would be amazing. So if there's any questions about anything that I can answer, I'd be happy to do that.
You haven't been to the city yet?
Haven't been to the city yet.
Would you ask them for the replacement?
Oh, no, don't, I don't need to ask them.
You don't have to.
They're, they're good with the funding. No.
It's already been.
Already in the interluding. Yeah.
Funding approved earlier.
It's already approved.
It's a county point. I can make a motion.
Second.
To approve? To approve. All right, a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Pass. Did we already do the, the lit discussion?
Yeah, just to do the broadband.
Sure, for the broadband, I, can I just say? So during the, the, the budget meetings that we had last month, the, the council discussed. We discussed the status of the broadband and, and we, we made a decision to not. To not fund any additional broadband. Expansion using the, the county dollars, given what we understand about what's already, what's already there. How it's already growing, given different, you know, given what the different companies are doing. You know, we didn't think that it was going to be a, a wise decision at this point to spend that money. And, you know, particularly with. I think. There were several concerns about, you know, knowing about how many people would specifically benefit by the money. It was such a, you know, the money that we were considering spending or asked to spend was so high. You know, I think we just decided rather than keep it going on and on, we just wanted to make a statement that I think from our position. That that is, is no longer a, you know, an active thing that we're, we're looking for. So we just, I think, I just want to let the public know that and that's. And if anyone thinks I said anything that you, you want to tweak or anything, but that's, that's kind of my perspective on it.
I would add that there are companies in the county that are looking to expand without us. For broadband. I know this specifically, last week there was a survey crew on my road survey. I, I went out and asked the guy, they were surveying poles. Uh, which I, I didn't think it'd ever come down my, I don't know if it will. They were a survey company to see if they, he said, they would, you know, to see if they're going to put maybe broadband up. On the pole or in the ground or at all. So they didn't work for any specific broadband company, but that is what they were doing in my neighborhood. And so again, I think I said this many, many months ago, like we are not against broadband expansion in this county and getting people more connected. I think what the board. But we kind of like, I will echo what he said, you know, we just, I don't, I don't know is that we are going to lay out a bunch of county money. Towards that expansion when it doesn't seem like company, companies are willing to do it without that money. That's how I will state it. That's all I had to add.
Questions?
Yeah, well, yeah, but surely just, and also wanted to commend Commissioner Abel on, on all the work that he's put in. And certainly the effort, the time that he's given to it. I think from our side with the restrictions and we've, we've talked about it, we've talked as a group and openly that. Senate bill one has, uh, will, will ultimately put on this county that was also a part of the discussion. And then to piggyback off, uh, Councilman Barlow, that knowing that there were other providers that. Were in the county that were not asking for, for that type of partnership. And just helped us kind of navigate towards that, that decision.
So there's no action to be taken on that tonight. I just wanted, we just wanted updates, update the public in the record, so. Amy, do you have anything else?
Yeah, Louis does, sorry.
Our, our camera company came back here about two weeks ago. And we sat down for a good four or five hours and went over everything to get everything fine tuned in. And it was brought up by one of her representatives. That we were originally going to go with the sixty gig of data for the body cams. He was worried about that. He has done some homework on some departments our sizes. So. He upped us to unlimited, which did up the rate, up, or up the total bill about seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars. So I needed to get that guy signed by you so I could take that in front of the commissioners on Monday. And if you guys have already, a, 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 a cure or, or taking care of the bond, I, I can probably find that, that money in my budget if I need to. That shouldn't be in the sheet. Just.
Let me add to that. So I didn't realize we should have already had the lease and everything signed. I thought when they first sent it to us and I emailed everything out to you guys. We were waiting on Jody to review and then I thought they would bring new, a new packet together. I didn't realize that they were waiting. So it was dated August four. So today when talking to Charlie, they're going to get me new paperwork to take to the commissioners. Cause the commissioners will sign the lease on Monday with a new date. And Louis, I called Louis because he wanted to make sure we weren't missing getting the money in time for the shipment. And so we've asked for them to include that in that number, but he's going to see if they'll move. The bond money from four sixty two to four eighty two.
Sixty two to five eighty two.
Whatever his. To include this, but we may not be able to get it. He's just going to ask him.
Like I said, I should be able to, if I'm going to move some things around, I think like that happened. So. Okay with you guys? Yeah, if, if, they did tell me if you stay on the sixty gig and you continue to blow over, you're going to get into a monthly billing. We're going to have to bill you for that. So that's why they recommended going upfront. So that other, the other few departments that they found have spent more than the unlimited bill that they would have. So they're getting it redone the next time they go.
I mean, this wasn't out of the question when you presented it.
No, I just, I just, I, I brought a new costume and I wanted to explain it to you. I think that's my responsibility to do that. I'm going to take it. I got to ask him to explain lots.
No action needed.
I don't think so. I just wanted to let you guys know and keep getting the lips. When I go talk to commissioners on Monday, they understand the same thing. All right, thank you.
Oh, I'm good. Thank you.
Are you good? Anything for the public?
Evening. My name is Mike Carpenter. I live on four hundred south. I had a question. Not so much concerning about your decision not to go forward with broadband. Do you have any idea how much money has been spent by the county overall for the broadband project up to this point? Roughly.
I'd have to go back and look. I don't. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it would be the, the money that was part of the, the, the RFI.
Yeah, I'd have to go back. Sorry, and I don't.
And then, and then the legal fees, so.
Quite a few legal fees, the RFI, the RFP.
Outting fees included in that. Okay.
I will get you a number. I'm sorry. I don't.
That's okay. It was just a question come to mind. Thank you.
Else or anything else? The emotion return. Alu?
Second.
All in favor?
Thanks.